Much better.
Your speakers aren't working? There's a council meeting happening in a couple of minutes. And I posted the Zoom link.
I think it's trying.
You sure? I can sign in and then we can run it off. Are you guys okay with that?
So I can only see Brian's hands and I can see, oh, there, oh, that's better. Yeah, okay, now we got it.
Come on, Linda, we had a good thing going there for a minute, come on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, we gotta see him? Hi, Brian.
Hey. Oh, there you are. You were behind the menu there for a moment.
Did you guys see me?
I see Walt.
You're muted, stop being muted, start talking.
I don't see Carrie. I mean, I see that Carrie's there, but I don't have.
How do I know if I'm muted?
I just see a little blank. White guy, white little two-piece thing.
You can see everybody.
Hi, Susan.
Hi, I have neighbors here as well. And my husband's here, so we're all, all here. Um, I don't know, now she can. There we go, this is Debbie and Bob, early, they live up the street from us.
So Carrie.
Amy, there was an Amy.
Was Amy gonna make it or is she at the march?
Um, I talked to Amy yesterday, she sounded like she was gonna be here. So, but I think we'll go ahead and get started. And we will call to order the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
All right, so we. Can we do the public hearing now for this, okay? So we are gonna open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 Carlton Urban Renewal Budget. Which is the purpose of the hearing. Are there any declarations of conflicts or interests or abstentions? Okay, staff reports.
Yes, Mayor and Council, the staff is recommending that at this meeting, the Carlton Urban Renewal Agency approve and authorize the Carlton Urban Renewal Agency Chairperson to assign resolution number 2026 adopting the budget that was approved at the Budget Committee meeting.
Okay, we will open public testimony. And again, this is just for the Urban Renewal Budget. There will be, if you want to speak, there's a two-minute time limit. And so we are going to invite any citizens who have any comments to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. And let us, and we'll start with any proponents who would like to speak. Are there any? All right, hearing none, we'll move to opponents. Hearing none, any undecided? All right, we will close the public testimony. Recommendations from staff?
Staff recommends that you approve Resolution 2020-6 authorizing the Urban Renewal Agency to collect tax increment for the Urban Renewal Plan.
Okay, any deliberations from Council?
No.
All right. So we'll take a motion to approve? Correct?
Yes.
We'll approve the Urban Renewal Agency Chairperson to sign Resolution number 2020-6 adopting the Urban Renewal Agency Budget for fiscal year 2020-2021, making appropriations and and a declaration of tax increment.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We will do a roll call vote.
All right, Counselor Wilder.
Aye.
Counselor Ma. Mayor.
Aye.
Counselor Watkins.
Aye.
Counselor Carl.
Aye.
Counselor Ward Bowlin.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Vote is seven zero. Motion carries.
Okay. So what's, something, that's done, okay. All right, so we will adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency portion of this meeting. And we will come back to our council meeting at 7:00 PM. All right, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so we are going to go ahead and call our regular council meeting to order. And we will begin with our salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I have a couple of additions to the agenda tonight. So, under number six ordinances and presentations, number eight will be Dennis Performance Evaluation. And number nine will be a discussion of the Grant Erickson Letter, somebody want to discuss that? Are there any other changes to the agenda? Are you all hearing me?
Yes.
Okay, that's gonna make sure I'm not missing somebody here. All right, so we are going to go into the public hearing portion for we're gonna open the public hearing for state revenue sharing, there are two resolutions under that one, and the fiscal year 2021 city budget. Are there any declaration of conflicts of interest or abstentions?
No.
Okay, staff reports?
Yes, Mayor and Council, on Resolution 2020-294, declaring the city's election to receive state revenues, it's required by state that we move by resolution that state revenue, to receive state revenue sharing funds. The Budget Committee did meet and agreed to allocate the shared revenue to the Street Fund for FY21 as in your past, and staff is recommending that the Council approval and authorize the mayor to sign this resolution.
Okay, so on the first resolution, 294, we're gonna open public testimony. Again, two minutes if you'd like to testify. I ask you to state your name and address for the record. So we will go in order of proponents first. Anyone in opposition to Resolution number 2020-294? Any proponents? Any undecided? All right, we will close the public testimony on Resolution 2020-294. Should we go all the way through a vote on that?
I think we should do the vote each resolution.
Okay, so recommendations from staff?
Still provided.
Okay, any deliberation on 2020-294? All right, we will ask for a roll call vote. Actually, I'm sorry, I'll ask for a motion and a second.
Move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign Resolution number 2020-294, declaring the city's election to receive state revenues in fiscal year 2021.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, and now we will move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Watkins.
Yes.
Counselor Mayor.
Aye.
Counselor Rose.
Aye.
Counselor Wilder.
Aye.
Counselor Carl.
Aye.
Counselor Ward Bowlin.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, on to Resolution 2020-296, staff report.
So the state requires a city that resides inside a county that has a population of greater than 100,000 has to certify that they serve four different categories to receive the shared revenue. And the categories are listed under the background, but we do provide police protection, street construction maintenance, sanitary sewer and storm waters and planning and zoning, so we well meet the, or to certify our revenues. Staff is recommending that the Council approve the mayor to sign Resolution 2020-296.
I'll ask for citizen comments at this point. Any proponents? Any opponents? Any undecided? All right, we will close the public testimony. Recommendation from staff?
Still suspended.
Any deliberation from Council?
No.
Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign Resolution number 2020-296, certifying the eligibility of the city of Carlton to receive state revenue shared funds.
Second.
A motion and a second. We will vote, roll call?
Counselor Watkins.
Yes.
Counselor Mayor.
Aye.
Counselor Rose.
Aye.
Counselor Wilder.
Aye.
Counselor Carl.
Aye.
Counselor Ward Bowlin.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Okay, we will now move on to the fiscal year 2021 city budget. Staff reports, oh, I'm sorry, any declarations or conflicts of interest or abstentions? Okay, staff report?
I'm sorry, did someone say something?
She said no.
Oh. The Budget Committee met, reviewed and approved the FY20 proposed budget, no changes coming forth, total appropriations for FY21 or $20,116,943. Staff is recommending that City Council approve and authorize the mayor to sign Resolution 2020-298, adopting the fiscal year FY21 budget, making appropriations, imposing and categorizing the facts.
Okay. So we'll open public testimony on the fiscal year 2021 city budget. Again, state your name and address for the record. Citizens who are proponents. Are there any comments? All right, citizens, opponents, any comments?
Are we reading the citizen letters that came in on that?
We didn't have any citizen letters, we do have one email from a citizen that the city manager gave direct answers to, and then we have a letter from the Yamhill County Sheriff that was included in your packet in support. Which will be.
What about the, the direct answers to Jeff Weiss?
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, we've got that with the oh, um, yes, I could read those if the council so desires. Do you want me to answer them as they go through?
Um.
I believe is Jeff on the line?
All right, we'll just go ahead and read the, the letter of record.
Questions, my question to council was, I read, would you like me to answer the questions as we go along? Or just?
Please.
Okay.
Please.
All right, so number one question, development of a new city hall at the cost of four to five million. This project was not approved by the voters who approved this expenditure, and how is it moving forward despite the people's vote? Why would a city of approximately 2,200 citizens require an extravagant facility is this? The economy is fragile and times are tough for most Carlton residents, the children, the city should reprioritize these funds to the greatest area of community need. So in this particular question, the city did ask the voter several years ago to approve a new tax for a new public safety facility. At that time, we had hired an architect that brought the building cost in to six to seven million, and the only way to have facilitated paying for that would have been the voters to pick up two and a half million of that. It failed, and the city divest from that, the city went back to the drawing board, we listened to the community, we contacted George Fox students, they created at no cost the initial design and worked with the community to help in the design and what the community was wanting. They did produce a scaled down version of the city hall project that's almost half of the original project and requires no new taxes. The city is in need of a new facility, was currently built in 1972. It does not meet sizing requirements, it does not have enough space for the existing staff. City council meetings, if we have a good topic, we can't even house everybody, we have to remove the chairs out of the room. And we do not have public restrooms. And one of the most important things is, is when our victims or suspects come into that lobby, there's no space for, to put them. We have had to evacuate our staff many times due to that emergency at the thing. So, over the last six years, the city has been putting away with the authorization of council 150,000 to 175,000 every year to establish that the city can, in fact, hold this debt service at four million, it's not a $5 million cost. Currently, right now, we have over a million dollars saved for the city hall projects, and we've been to fiscal stewards, we have talked to several lenders who will give us a low rate and meet that same established debt service that we've done. Any other questions on the city hall?
I can't hear what's being said.
I can't either.
I believe it's background noise from somebody who just connected.
Okay. So question number two was about, it says city hall addition of 50, 500,000. Is this an additional to the multimillion dollar project listed above? What are these funds intended for, and is it mandatory at this time? We don't have a city hall project addition for 500,000. I'm wondering if Mr. Weiss, I apologize for what I'm saying, maybe saw on the capital improvement plan some planned expenses, but that was happening through the year, it's not an addition to. Number three, hiring additional officer, again with a city population of approximately 2,200. Why is this required? We have two full-time officers and a full-time police chief working at combined 120 hours per week. Additional hours which require coverage are conditionally supported by neighboring cities in the county without extra cost to the city. The neighboring city is Yamhill PD, Yamhill PD's taxpayers pay for them to be in their city, they do assist in emergencies as Carlton assists them. And the county is at cost to our taxpayers and they pay for it in their, their taxes to the county, and they do help facilitate the cost to county, so I hope that helps. Current staffing does not allow full patrol coverage of the city, an additional officer would provide 40 additional hours per week. And vacations and sick times propose additional scheduling issues. When no Carlton officer is on shift, the county responds to calls as their units are available, and the city does not have a dedicated sheriff's unit. A dedicated sheriff's unit is a large cost, as you know, for them to come in. It is desirable to leave the safety and welfare of Carlton residents to the availability of other, it is not desirable to leave it to other jurisdictions that they have no legal obligation to patrol Carlton. Any questions on that before I move on?
Can I just?
So, the city has applied for a community grant, it's called the COPS grant. And it's been reviewed, it looks like it's going to be successful. We just talked to them recently, and they sent us financial components. We should have an answer in August to September that, they've got some other things they're dealing with, that will be provided to the city $40,000 a year for the next three years. And then the only obligation the city would have is to hold the officer for the fourth year if we weren't able to support it. And then also to our general fund, grant or no grant, is still able to financially support the officer. Question, I was gonna move to question for.
Priscilla, question regarding that.
Yes.
Regarding the police officer, did you find out what the, how many days after the grant is approved that the city has to sign the grant and therefore, you know, in other words, the number of days that we have to consider moving forward with hiring a police officer?
I did, they sent it, it's 45 days upon notice of award. And they did say if we decline to take the ward, we may not be successful in applying again if it comes up. If this grant isn't available at all times, it's a.
So we just have to make sure that we, yeah, we have to make sure that, that that's included on the agenda to discuss at that time, before that 45 days elapse.
We will not accept that grant without council approval.
Well, we were going to do a finance, financial review before we made that decision, was that correct?
We were to bring the grant and then at that time to council for you guys to make that decision.
With a financial review and see what our finances looked like at that time?
Oh, yes.
What the progress, what the prognosis is for financial stability.
I am happy to say, I was just working on finances today and the even the ones that we thought were gonna go flat are coming in and will be making budget on all revenues. So, but we'll do that financial report for you because as Counselor, I'm gonna say wrong now, Mayor stated, we're gonna start doing the financial report, so you'll be up to date even before the grant gets there.
So we'll be getting regular quarterly reports now?
Yes, she suggested once a month, I'm gonna try my best.
Okay.
Okay, number four, increased of overtime for police officers. As stated within the budget, overtime will increase so the city does not have to rely on the Yamhill County Sheriff's Department. The city of Carlton currently does not pay for assistance from the Yamhill County Sheriff's, city of Yamhill officers and the city of McMinnville officers to supply coverage when no Carlton officer is on duty. Why would we add unnecessary overtime expenses to the budget when we can simply work more closely with other cities and counties we are, they are currently free of charge? So, the overtime did not increase, it was level. And city of McMinnville does not respond to Carlton only at one time in the last six years, and that was because we had somebody that really needed a female officer, so they came over and assisted. City of Yamhill is paid by the city of Yamhill to control their city, and they will help us in an emergency only situation. Or, but if we're not on duty, it's the Yamhill County Sheriff's that come and help. But the Chief of Police has also made it that it's for emergencies only, he handles all non-emergency calls 24/7. So they send him, it's called a CTP, and he responds, but an emergency sheriffs will come, and it is paid for by Carlton residents taxpayers in their taxes.
Because it's called out in another part of the agenda packet, can I also share at this point that we received a letter from Tim Svenson, the sheriff, in support of the additional FTE position in the Carlton Police Department?
Yes, thank you very much, he's well aware of the increase of population, increase of call load, and He's well aware of the increase of population, increase of haul load, and they work really well together. Any other questions before I move on to number five? Number five, as stated on the city website, the budget includes funds for new patrol vehicles, radios and so on. Are the current vehicles in state of disrepair? Do they require simple upgrades or complete replacement? The budget is only calling for one vehicle. We'll be selling two surplus vehicles to help offset the cost. We're gonna do a lease program with the radios and I'll touch on the radios here in a moment. And that lease program has no interest, no cost to be spread over the next three years for just one vehicle. The city is replacing these older vehicles because they've reached the end of their useful life. And the older vehicles are requiring more maintenance and cost to operate. The radio project is a mandated project to participate in as McMinnville was the first to switch to a new encrypted technology for digital radios, making it hard. Our officers won't be able to communicate with them. So Yamhill PD is already switched to the new digital radios. But Carlton PD is partnering with the Sheriff's Department and with Newberg in to buy their radios altogether. So the whole county is switching. This is not just exclusive to Carlton to be on this scripted system. If we did not switch to these radios, we would not be able to hear any of our other neighboring partners. He did go on, oh, here's the vehicles. If the vehicles can't be repaired or equipment upgraded, there would be no need to add this expense to the budget, especially given their limited use. If replacement of the vehicles is indeed mandatory, perhaps police officers could generate revenue for the city to cover these expenses by issuing tickets to speeders and citing non-compliance issues such as cell phone usage and failure to yield or stop pedestrians with stop signs, just like many other neighboring communities are doing. This is illegal. You cannot go out and generate revenue off of any citations to facilitate. That is, we would be in deep trouble if we did that. They already enforce these violations and they don't do any enforcement for the purpose of raising revenue. It cannot be done for that. Number six, property and utility rate increases. Property tax increases six point seven percent. The city does not determine property tax. That is done by the tax assessor's office. That is their collection and their estimate. And so this might be a tolerable tax increase if the funds weren't directly towards fixing the major infrastructure issues within the community such as poor street quality, potholes, lack of sidewalks and poor lighting anywhere off Main Street. So the only thing that the city does impose tax-wise is the pool bond, which is reduced this year, as we discussed in the budget meeting. And that came down at sixty-two cents per thousand. So it's a reduction from the year before. Utility rate increases water and sewer. The city hires a rate analysis. They've done a rate analysis from Galari Consulting, who you hear from later on in this meeting in regards to a methodology. These charges are, were, these were estimated by her. We've got some huge DEQ projects coming up that we're working on some low interest financing through DEQ. But the city is obligated by the state to repair that and it's in the millions of dollars. The water, we are currently doing some upgrades off of a grant. We got two grants for estimated around ten million. We're already receiving funds off of those grants and that will be going. The water rate increase does. For the water is just the normal projects that the rate analysis put in. And there's a list and all of these projects are listed on our website under methodology and project lists. They're all included. And then it said three hundred and sixty thousand is listed to be paid to the DSF, which is the debt service fund for payment of service. And residents should be given an explanation of what debt service is being paid. All of our debt service is, that is described and is currently in our debt service fund, which is on page eighty-nine of the budget. And I'll close with this from Jeff. We are living in unprecedented times with a fragile economy and a looming recession. Many people are out of work and simply can't afford some of the proposed tax increases. Each and every line item in this budget must be scrutinized and carefully considered before approval. In addition, each department which receives a budget increase should be held accountable for meeting their objectives and completing their proposed projects by the Carlton City Council. The city of Carlton looks to each of you to represent our best interest in this election year beyond. Sincerely, Jeff Weiss and Becky Moore, five thirty-eight West North Street.
Okay, so we are still in citizen testimony. Any other opponents? Any undecided? Okay, we will close the public testimony. Recommendation from staff?
Staff is recommending that council approve the mayor to sign resolution twenty twenty-two ninety-eight, adopting the fiscal year FY twenty-one city budget, making appropriations, hoping to have a right.
Counsel, any deliberation?
Well, I've had a few questions from folks since the, some of that information came out. I understand, Brian, that you're gonna be meeting with one of them tomorrow regarding the question of what's gonna be happening up in Han Creek Park as far as.
Oh, yes.
Development up there.
Yeah, so I've actually gotten a few emails now from residents in the Carlton Crest neighborhood who say they would be more interested in a place structure before we do the picnic shelter and the path. So yeah, I'll be meeting with one of those residents, maybe two tomorrow. And I guess the idea is that if the residents in Carlton Crest would prefer that we do a place structure first, then we'll bring that to council and offer council the option of changing that in the budget.
In regards to Linda, I know that you talked about the parks before. I just want you to know that that capital improvement plan and those projected park projects will not proceed without council approval.
Okay. I, I was, well, part of it is that I was, I was kind of reached out to on Carlton Crest on the Han Creek. But also my recollection, and I checked with a couple of the other members of the Ad Hoc Parks Committee from twenty thirteen. We spent a lot of time on Han Creek because we were trying to figure out what to do there. And one of the, the two priorities that we came up, just because I know, Brian, I don't think you were on that committee, were you?
No, I wasn't.
Yeah, okay. Cause it, and I checked with a couple of other members too. The, the two priorities that we came up with on that were for Han Creek were for a basketball hoop, which the kids really wanted and the playground. And then the pathway was supposed to be a natural pathway down around through that would be natural coating, not cement. So those were, I don't think cement paving was ever mentioned on anything that we did. But just, you know, as background on that.
Right, I think the bottom line here is that if, if the residents want to, we can adjust where the money's going to that's in the budget. So we can take money away from the shelter and the path to do a place structure if that's what the residents want.
That is correct.
Okay. I just, yeah, I've been seeing some letters too, so.
Okay, yeah, and if you could just forward those on to either myself or Dennis, that kind of helps us have an idea of how many people are, are asking for it.
Okay. Well, I've got all kinds of little pink slips here, but I think a lot of that was answered in Christie's questions when she was answering or Jeff's questions that Christie was answering. So I'll shut up now.
Any other counsel conversation? All right, I will, we could do a motion in a second.
Move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign resolution number twenty twenty dash two nine eight, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty-one city budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing the tax.
Second.
A motion and a second and we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Watkins?
No.
Counselor Mayor?
No, for me as well.
Counselor Rhodes?
No.
Counselor Wilder?
Yes.
Counselor Carl?
Hi.
Counselor Ward Mullen?
Yes.
Mayor Rick?
Hi.
The vote is four yes, three no, motion carries.
All right, we will close out the public hearing now and move back into our regular meeting. So we move on to citizen comments. So if there are any citizens who have any comments on anything else, this would be the time to share what you would like. And if you could give us your name and address for the record.
This is Susan Turrell and I live on four sixteen Link Avenue in Carlton, obviously adjacent to JR Meadows. I would like to address the impending July zoning decision for phase two of JR Meadows. Our city's comprehensive plan and our city's policies include providing adequate parkland, protecting sensitive natural resources, including mature timber and wetlands, and creating diversity of housing opportunities. Now is the time to consider if this property and this developer are suitable for conforming to the city policies and comprehensive development plans. I have read the city count, the Carlton City Development Code. And within that set of codes is a zoning designation titled mixed-use residential, which perfectly conforms to the vision laid out in our city's comprehensive plan. The current zoning request is for R three and R two, which allows, but does not mandate the developer to build multifamily affordable housing. Furthermore, it does not mandate park, green space or preservation of natural resources. This developer has repeatedly shown from previous development in our town that he has no intention of building multifamily housing. As he demonstrated in JR Meadows, he has no intention of providing green space or park areas within his development, as would be mandated if he was only approved for mixed residential zoning. Ideally, we would be seeing leadership from our city manager and contracted city planner that advocate for zoning changes that conform to city comprehensive plans. Most of this property in Han Creek is low-lying area and it currently functions as a natural flood control for Han Creek by absorbing water in its wetlands and ephemeral drainage areas. Frankly, its only suitable development purpose should be parkland for city residents on the southeast part of town, as designated by the city as an underserved area. If city councillors find that they are inclined to develop this sensitive area, they should not be considering greenlighting this R three, R two zoning. Rather, they should be encouraging mixed residential zoning that mandates any housing include affordable options and mandates green space connectivity and preservation as outlined in our comprehensive plan. By the time the zoning meeting in July occurs, it will be too late to consider how we want Carlton to grow. By then, city council will be only thinking about whether or not this developer should be allowed to get R three, R two zoning approved. If the city allows that zoning, it will be greenlighting a continuation of that, this developer's current development practice, which will neither provide affordable housing nor create green space livability and sensitivity to natural resources. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Susan. Any other citizen comments?
I'd like to comment also, I'm Debbie Early, I live at six oh three East Harrison. And I would like to say that I do agree with what Susan had just read. And I would also like to add that my concern about the water, the way that it is a wetlands and how it will affect with it getting paved over with homes, how that's going to all come about. I wanna know what their plan is for that. I don't understand how it's just gonna go away, the waters. It's a low land, it's not gonna go away. How's the sewer going to be pumped up and out of there? Cause it's gonna be uphill, I don't understand. So I would like these questions addressed. So how are you gonna resolve those water issues? And is this an actual appropriate for our small town? Is the types of homes, cause we've already had in some of the, your findings. You've already had met some of the dwelling units. And I'm trying to write, follow where I'm reading. Exceeding the project needed for single-family homes seven years before the two thousand twenty-seven project is needed, while also decreasing the percentage of lower-cost housing units. We, as our children are growing, my kids are ready to buy homes, but they can't afford to buy homes. They wouldn't be able to buy some of these homes that has already been presented in some of the brand-new area that is right across from us. The six homes that have been put on those lots. There, so I don't understand how this person is developing this, how that can be called affordable housing. And I would like to see how that's going to be addressed. So there is comments. Well said.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Mr. Mayor, let me just comment briefly that persons wishing to comment on the current land use zoning change that is going to be coming to the council need to, need to be sure to participate in the public hearing that will be properly noticed. Since the council can only take note and make decisions based upon information that's in the record. And so the, I would, I would ask that people making the prior comments be sure to attend the public hearing to make those comments or provide a copy of their comments here to that hearings so that the council can take them into consideration at that time.
Thank you all. Any other citizen comments? Okay, we'll move on to announcements, reports and presentations. Consent agenda. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I was talking over somebody there, I don't know who it was.
No, I didn't hear anything on this side, so.
My apologies, I was moving to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries. Ordinance presentations, discussion and potential action items. Resolution number twenty twenty dash two ninety-five updating the master fee schedule. Christie?
Yes, so the master fee schedule comes before council every June meeting. And we go through the fees, make sure that they are up to date, reflect our outside contractors. And, sorry, I'm looking. And includes the new rates for the water rate increase that was previously approved and adopted. The SDC rates with the two point six percent increased cost of living as we're allowed to by resolution two thousand five zero zero eight E. There were some additional edits, just kind of some typos. We increased our coffee costs to cover the toner. And there was some court fees that weren't in there. We've now listed them in there for B and B suspension packets and failure to appear arrangements. So those weren't listed in the fee schedule before. Also, the utility billing fees that were listed on our. Also, the utility billing fees that were listed on our water service application, they're already impacted, but we did put them in the master fee schedule. And then we included the hydrant hookup, which wasn't included before, which is $60 per month. And then we just added some language to clarify. And then we have had many requests for Han Creek Park rental, where they could use the picnic tables and reserve it for residents for their children's birthday parties. So it's a small fee so that they could reserve those picnic tables, and then just some clarifying language for public records requests. So staff is recommending that council approve the mayor to sign resolution 2020-295 with the updated master fee schedule for the year.
Any discussion? Somebody like to make a motion?
I move to approve and authorize mayor to sign resolution number 2020-295, updating the master fee schedule, revising fees and charges for the city of Carlton with the rates included in the adoption of the FY21 budget.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, motion carries. Resolution number 2020-297, the fiscal year 1920 budget adjustments.
Yes, so Resolution 2020-297, every June also we come forth if we need to do any adjustments. Sometimes we have to do a mid-year. This year is actually relatively small. We were very fortunate to receive a large amount of donations for the Destination Lights. And then we received a donation of $7,500 for police vehicle equipment, computer upgrade. And so we want to make that adjustment of receiving that revenue to go to the Destination Lights and police. And then the other one for the debt service adjustment, there's two things at play here. One is we got our first Meadow Lake payment. We had to estimate it last the first year, and so we were off by that estimation by $39,000. So we're moving it from the waterfront contingency because they're responsible for that. And then it's budgeted accordingly and correctly for FY21. And the same is with the sewer contingency and the debt service. Is the sewer master plan, first debt service payment came in, and we overestimated it by $5,956. It's also been adjusted accordingly, and the debt service is now got that our amortization schedules are now with it. And one thing for councils to note, in case you weren't, didn't know about a debt service fund. A debt service fund is not supposed to carry balances. You have to keep it as close to zero as possible. So this is why we're, the sewer contingency will receive back the money from debt service transfer, and the water contingency will contribute the money to keep that debt service fund at zero. It's just there solely to pay the debt. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
From who?
Yeah, this is, well, it's kind of in reference, but a little bit off-base, but I don't know where else to ask it. Kristi, are you aware if Senator Boquist got the update and report on that that he was requesting?
For?
On the status of the grant and where the money is and how it's?
I don't know.
Is it in our bank account? Is it still with the state? That was one of his concerns.
So this is how those lottery funds work. Every time, currently we're in design phase. So every time I get bills from the attorney or from the engineer currently, or any permits, I make copies of those invoices, submit them, and I submit them if they do two semi-annual reports. We've already done the first one, and it comes back. So it's already started. We had to go through some alterations in the contract that we have received funds. Currently, I've not talked to Senator Boquist, but I did advise back many, many months ago that we had in fact started receiving. So, and that's where it at. We're getting ready for the second submission. Currently, we've received about $300,000. We're going to be getting before fiscal year end probably another $400,000 from the lottery funds. They don't just give us the 10 million. They hold it. They don't give it to us until we submit receipts and expenses as they're incurred.
Okay.
Sure. Linda, I can also answer that question. Yes, I have talked with Senator Boquist twice and indicated that we do have a signed contract with the state, so the money is secured in earmarked for the city of Carlton. And we, as Kristi has said, we've been drawing on that for some time now.
As long as he has the numbers that he needs. That was the only thing that I was asking for, and that was the only thing he was asking for. So as long as that's done, that's fine. That's all I want to know. I don't need to hear anymore.
Perfect. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Do the camera better, people. Take it off of her.
To approve Resolution 2020-297?
A move that the city council approve and authorize the mayor to sign, Resolution number 2020-297, authorizing budget adjustments for fiscal year 1920.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, motion carries. Resolution number 2020-299, the wastewater methodology. Is Deb online?
She is.
I'm here, yes.
Okay, so Deb, it's your show now.
Okay, I was trying to turn my camera back on here. There.
There you are.
Yeah, hi there. Good evening. So just to clarify, when we talk about wastewater SDCs or systems development charges, we're talking about the one-time charge on new development for capacity in the wastewater system. Your current SDC methodology was developed in 2010. And recently, you updated your wastewater facilities master plan. So it's always a good time to look at the SDCs when you have a new master plan because it identifies new projects. And we also revised the methodology to include both an improvement fee and a reimbursement fee based on the existing available capacity in the system as allowable by Oregon SDC law. This additional fee or component of the fee, it's all combined into one fee, allow, gives the city great flexibility in terms of reimbursement revenue from SDCs can be used for any type of capital project. And so the revised methodology gives you greater flexibility and also addresses the projects, the priority projects that are included in the master plan. And the ordinance, so there are three components. You adopt the methodology, a new fee schedule, and a new project list. And the project list can be updated anytime, and the fee schedule can be updated in the future based on inflationary adjustments. So any questions for me?
I guess not.
Okay.
Thank you, Deb. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Deb.
You're welcome.
So council, a little from staff, I know Deb touched on it. It just gives us some flexibility to have some better spending capabilities with the SDCs. And currently, in our sewer SDCs, we have about $1 million. So this will help us immensely. So we're asking that council approve and have the mayor sign Resolution 2020-299, updating the methodology for sewers SDCs.
We have a motion?
Excuse me, I move to that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign Resolution number 2020-299, updating the sewer SDC methodology.
Second. Second.
Now? Yes. Okay, sorry, guys. This was supposed to be a public hearing.
We're just going to add the language. Notice February 28th, we just didn't say the language at the beginning of it.
So what else?
Just open it, ask for public comment, just on this, and then.
Okay, so we'll open for any public hearing on the wastewater methodology. Okay, so we will close public testimony. We have a motion in a second, so I will ask for a roll call vote.
All right, Counselor Watkins?
Aye.
Counselor Mayor?
Aye.
Counselor Rhodes?
Aye.
Counselor Wilder?
Aye.
Counselor Carl?
Aye.
Counselor Ward Mullen?
Aye.
Mayor Rick?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, zero.
Okay, we will move on to acceptance of the 2020 street improvement paving bid, and I will turn this over to Gordon.
Oh, you won't see me on the video, but you get to hear me. I'm sitting here in City Hall with everybody else. So on May 27th, we have bid opening for the 2020 street improvement project. And every year, Brian, the Public Works Director, and myself, the engineer, take a look at the streets, the conditions of the pavement, and identify which streets require improvement, which ones are priority. And so that's what's on the list here. And the bid is, low bid is Baker Rock at $170,377. The engineer's estimate was actually $216,780. The bids for street projects that have been coming in were low because of the oil prices dropping, so we got a good break there. And we reviewed Baker Rock. They're a contractor in good standing. They've been doing pavement work in the state for a long time. So we feel that we have a good bid here.
Any questions for Gordon? Is there a motion?
Move to accept the 2020 street improvement paving bid from Baker Rock at $170,377.
Second.
Can I?
Any discussion?
Can I ask that that motion be amended to include and to give notice of intent to award if that has not yet happened? So that the bid would be contingent upon the non-receit of any protest.
So moved and amended? Does that work?
Thank you.
Second, still second.
All right. So any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, motion carries. Onto the Acorn Wars September event. Amy?
Yes, so this is the event that's been held a couple of years now in our whatever park, Lower Park. It's the Acorn War event where they come in and they stay the whole weekend, and they have medieval reenactment. So it's held September 11th through the 13th. They let the park close from Friday 8:00 a.m. to Sunday 5:00 p.m., so they can do their reenactment. And it is the same type setup as they have had the last couple of years. And I believe Heidi Ranker, who's been a big part of it, I believe she's on the line. Heidi, do you have any comments or anything to add? Maybe not?
Is Heidi there? Heidi, are you muted?
How would she tell you?
She's yelling.
All right.
Participants are able to unmute themselves if they so desire.
Counselor, do you have any questions that I can help you with perhaps?
I don't have any questions on this. If they're basically doing the same format in the same timeframe that they've done the last couple of years, they've worked hard to accommodate concerns that we've had. They've worked hard to ensure that everything down there is safe. The place is immaculate when they're done. I can't come up with any, any reason to be concerned other than depending on what's happening with the COVID situation. And I know that this crew will watch that carefully and back out if they need to. So I would move that we approve this request.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, motion carries. I would like to add that they did have an event planned in June, and they self-canceled that aware of the gathering situation. So I'm sure they will do the same. They'll keep an eye on September as well. All right. Number six, renewing the state of emergency declaration. So basically, this is just what we did last month to keep the state of emergency declaration out there for another month while we're still going through the pandemic and all that's associated with that. So I would suggest that we renew the state of emergency through July 8th, which will be the day after our next council meeting, so we can look again in July at whether or not we want to renew it. So I'll make the motion. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, will you be signing on that one?
Yes.
Previously, we didn't get that, so that would be great. Thanks.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, motion carries. Dennis, the ODOT Highway 47 ad hoc committee? Is that me?
So the council asked that we put together some guidelines for an ad hoc committee, which has been done in the memorandum that you have before you this evening. And since we have some time, was hoping that the council could discuss that this evening, and if we have to make some changes and bring it back for final blessing, we can do that.
Shirley?
Well, as far as discussion, and I think we had talked about this previously, that the two councillors that are, would be asked to serve on this committee, that I would like to see that those councillors represent both a councillor that approved the reroute and a councillor who did not approve the reroute.
Good point.
And also, with respect to the committee members, I would like to, I mean, I know we are going to advertise for those interested, but I would. would like to ensure that we have folks on that committee who are very knowledgeable about the topic and committed to it and, you know, so that we, in addition to advertising that we do outreach as well to solicit members that we think would be appropriate to the committee.
Okay.
I'd like to see us add some language that there'd be helpful if they had some construction type of background or worked on large projects of this nature in the past, that would be helpful for the committee as well.
Actually, that's a good idea, yeah.
Any other comments?
What, when are we suggesting that we're going to put this committee together? Are we waiting a while or are we going to get to start to form it and just put it on hold or what?
Well, I think that if we have the language that we want, maybe with the two suggestions or the three suggestions we just got added to it. Dennis, do we need approval from the council before we start advertising?
No, I think if there's general consensus tonight to what is outlined in the memo, then we can move forward with that and prepare an advertisement and get that up on the website and then we can do some outreach as well. And depending on the response that we get, if we get a good response and we have a good candidate pool, we can, you can bring this to the council at the next meeting and the council can make those appointments. So if the council's consensus tonight is that they're good with that with the addition of some of the attributes they're looking for in the makeup of the count of the committee, then we can move forward tonight with that consensus.
What is, what is, have we gotten any updates or timelines or information from ODOT as far as where they are? I mean, I'm seeing survey stakes out there on Monroe and Monroe and Monroe and spray paint all over Cooch Street, so I'm kind, I was kind of wondering what's going on.
I was just out with my granddaughter and a can of spray paint, so.
That's about what it looks like, actually. Except for the survey stakes, which do have a little flag on them that says ODOT Monroe Street, so have we had any updates from them yet?
Linda, I thought that I put some information updating the situation either in the city manager's report or in a Friday email of last week. But in a nutshell, ODOT is moving forward with trying to get the project reassigned and reaproved. And they're having their difficult times moving forward only because of the COVID thing, everybody's slower than normal, everybody's working from home and they don't have a date certain for me yet as to when they expect that approval to occur. It is coming and every time I talk with them, they say in a couple of weeks, so.
So even though they don't have anything necessarily approved, they're kind of moving in that direction with the surveys and what they're doing.
Yes, correct.
And what about some sort of contract for the work that they supposed to be doing?
Kathy, they won't do that until after they get the first step done and this approval will be expected in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, well, we'll be looking for that then.
Okay, so Dennis, you have what you need from us?
I think so, I heard consensus, so we're gonna move forward with that outline.
Okay, thanks.
And I was just gonna call out that, yeah, the the update that Dennis was referencing was indeed in the city manager report, which is on page 143 of the packet.
Well, that's kind of why, I mean, we're seeing survey stakes.
All right, we're gonna move on to number eight, Dennis' performance evaluation. And councillor Mara jumped the gun and contacted the council of governments. This was not on behalf of the council and not in the plan for what we were going to do. So I've told the cog, we're not ready to to talk with them just yet about what we're gonna do. I have asked Shirley and Amy if they would work together with me to boot together a performance evaluation process that works for our community for Carlton and they have both agreed to do so, so we will be moving forward with that. I just want to read to you the city manager evaluation process from our code says the performance of the city manager shall be evaluated annually annually by the city council. The mayor shall, on behalf of the council, coordinate the obtaining of written and oral information to assist the council in such evaluation. The evaluation of the city manager shall not be undertaken on the same schedule as for other city employees and shall be normally and shall normally be completed not later than December 1st of each calendar year. So we are by no means behind schedule with this. Dennis' anniversary is this week and so we will make sure that we are, I would assume will be done long before December 1st with this process. And so once the three of us have gotten together and part of the process also and Dennis' contract is we are required to work with him on what the review process looks like. And so we'll be meeting with Dennis and we'll be meeting together to put together a process again that we think works for us and then I will bring that back to the council meeting when that's ready.
Brian, who?
Comments or questions?
Who is we?
Pardon?
Who is we? You said we are going to meet with Dennis, who is we?
Shirley, Amy and myself.
All right, all right.
Well, I think there was some concern because it seems like traditionally we have been doing the, my understanding, I shouldn't say that, I did it once, has been that we do it in May and things were dragging along there. I as long as you guys are taking care of it and as long as you got it clear with Dennis, that's good.
We are and actually, if you want to go traditionally, the last few years, there was no, before Dennis was here, there was no city manager evaluation, so. All right. Move, any more comments or questions on that one? All right, the next one is the Grant Erickson letter. And I had some comments back from councillors on the way that that happened and so I've asked Walt if he would address that for me.
I also have something that I want to, I have something to comment on with respect to this.
Okay, let's let Walt talk first and then we'll go to any comments.
Mayor members of the council, I became aware from a call from Dennis that a comment had been made at the planning commission meeting in May that that raised a question regarding the allegations against the entire city council relating to potential honesty, integrity and bribery. The the city manager by charter is the chief administrative officer of the city and a city manager's duties normally include receiving and investigating allegations of improper or illegal conduct by city officials or staff. It is clearly within the purview of a city manager to conduct a preliminary inquiry into allegations of improper conduct.
The meeting, this is a Carlton, yeah, this is what's going on, Carl.
If there's, if there's evidence of serious wrongdoing, a city manager decides whether to request assistance in in conducting a further investigation or whether to refer a matter for to investigative authorities. In this case, having received information concerning an allegation of possible wrongdoing by the city council involving possible bribery, the manager consulted me and I advised that he had a duty to make a preliminary inquiry because such a statement cannot be ignored. There has been some comment that the mayor was the person to make such inquiry, not the city manager. And while that is not the normal procedure, in this case, the mayor could not conduct an investigation for the basic reason that he is a member of the council and a person accused cannot be the person who conducts an inquiry. That's a basic investigation 101. Based on my advice, Dennis wrote a short letter to the person who had made the statement to seek any information that might exist about any such behavior or allegations. The person promptly wrote back and I believe you all received a copy of that letter disclaiming any personal knowledge or any personal view as to the possible wrongdoing. After receiving, receiving that response, Dennis consulted me again and wrote a follow up letter to inquire as to the names of persons might have any such information. To my knowledge, no such names or further information has been forthcoming and barring receipt of any corroboration, I advised Dennis that it would be reasonable for him to close the preliminary inquiry. I'm, I'm not, I've not heard from him whether he has or has not, but barring any further information, I don't see a basis for any further added inquiry. Finally, while I can't give personal advice to appointed or elected members or to staff as the city attorney, I represent you as a group and the citizens of Carlton, I can state from my 40 years in private practice that if you publish or recommunicate a false or defamatory or slanderous statement regarding someone or a group of persons, you can be subject to civil liability for repeating a false statement, even if it is not your statement. And that should be of concern to each of you. I urge you all not to fall into that circumstance or put yourself in that position. And it is, I, I think perhaps the notion of it's okay to repeat someone else's allegation is that 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 carries with it no potential problem is is can't be over, can't be overstated. I can't give advice to anybody who made any such statement, but but I urge each of you not to not to make those kinds of statements unless you have some knowledge as to the truth of what you're republishing. So those are the comments I would make. I asked, I informed the mayor of my conversations with with your city manager. And that is the course of of the, the course that occurred over the last, what is it, 10 days? So and I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Well, I, I appreciate your comments and based on what you're saying, it changes what what I was about to comment on tonight, but I would say that it would have, I believe it would have been useful to the council to have some kind of knowledge of what was going on and even to be briefed as you have just done right now about what you're up, what the obligations are, what Dennis' responsibilities are. Instead, we received this letter out of the blue and it was very alarming to me and I just think that the council, if the mayor was notified, that the council.
And I appreciate that comment and that that concern. I think that people who are who are in the business of doing investigations often run up against the problem of when and how do you inform the person who may be the object of your investigation? So that is, you, in this case, it was, it was important to see if there was any, since there was some smoke floating around, it was important to see if there was any fire. So far, no fire has emerged and I would be highly doubtful that any will, knowing this council, who I believe to be all of of high integrity and in honesty, but 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 the the process of making an inquiry had to take place. We wanted to do it as quickly as possible because you don't want to draw these kinds of things out. And, you know, being able to report back to the council now on the results is is kind of better than reporting before you have that. So that's the only thing I would say in addition.
Did, did anybody prior to sending that letter out, take the time to listen to that particular meeting and ascertain what was said at the meeting? I realize once again, Walt, that you're saying that repeating it is still a problem. But I'm, what the letter indicated and the actuality were two different things. So I just wondered if anybody listened before they wrote the letter.
I can't speak and won't speak for Dennis in that regard. I listened to the tape, but not until after that letter had gone out.
And I can speak to listening to the tape. We had four different staff people listen to it four different times before the letter went out. And then I might follow up that closing the case, I have held off on doing that until after this evening because I understood ahead of time that this was going to be a discussion topic. So after tonight's discussion by the council is over with, I'm prepared to close the case as well.
I would really appreciate seeing the city send a letter of apology to the person involved with this. This is a volunteer who has put a lot of time and energy already into working with the city. He's, he's stepped up and done these things. I understand what Walt is saying, that there was some concern and there was some legal concern in it, but I think it would be hoove us all to maybe make that effort and extend that hand and say, you know, we are, we are sorry for the misinterpretation.
Well, I will say on the record this evening that I appreciate Mr. Erickson, I believe, right? I appreciate his prompt responses, clarification and his, his disavowal of any personal knowledge and and belief as to the truth of what he had been told or or the opinions that he had received. So to the extent that 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 needs, needs to be undertaken and I believe he's on this, he's listening to this meeting. I appreciate his cooperation and his prompt response and and hope that everyone can learn from this experience.
I'd like to see. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to read the email that I sent to him in response, which basically says what Walt just did, it said, "Good morning, Grant, thank you for your clarification. I appreciate your timely response. I'm sure you can agree that such an accusation if true is a very serious matter. Would it be possible to get the names of the persons you have talked with so I can follow up about possible evidence in this matter? If you're not comfortable doing so, I would ask that you encourage them to contact me with any information they may have. Thank you again for your response and clarification, Dennis Durham, City Manager."
And and as our names were all part of this, I would like to see our names published on the record that this investigation you say you've now done has cleared our names as it was suggested in this.
Yes, Kathy, that's what I said I would do after this evening.
Well, you said it closely, I'm not sure it's written that our names are cleared.
Yeah.
I, I just want to say that the, the, the third hand or the second hand allegation that was made goes to the very heart of the functioning of a city government. There can be no more important thing than the honesty and integrity of a city council. And so the, 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 the opinion that was expressed in a second hand fashion is not inconsequential, it was very serious and it needed to be looked into and it's appropriate for, once the case is closed, for the city manager to publicly state that there was no substance found, if that in fact is the case.
All right.
Okay. One more question. We're just from my reference, where is it in the code that discusses the obligations of the city manager to investigate? You, you made a comment about as a city office, what you said exactly.
Where you're looking at is, and it's not that specific, it doesn't talk about investigations, but it talks about the city manager as the, it's in the charter and it's in, I believe it's in section, the second.
I think, you know what, Walt?
Section, it's section 24 of the charter, if you want to read it, but. But it's basically the description of his duties. But the important, the important statement is that he is the chief administrative officer of the city. And with that comes the responsibility to look into alleged wrongdoing in my.
So that's an implied part of that.
Yes, yes, and it's very common. Cause you will, you will see, you will see inquiries done by city managers all the time, it's not unusual. Well, Carlton is lucky that it's had very few such inquiries to undertake. But in my time as a city attorney, I've seen theft, I've seen um sexual harassment charges, um investigations. Uh, I've seen defalcation issues and uh and luckily Carlton has has had very little of that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, cause it's, it's just un, I think in the charter, it's just unclear enough that my perception would be that if you're embarking on something like that kind of an investigation, I wouldn't be expecting the city manager to do it, I would be expecting that complaint to go to the attorney and the city attorney and the city attorney would be supervising it, that would be my expectation, but.
That is undertaken, that is undertaken in some cities and and sometimes outside council is hired for that specific purpose. But I think there is a, there's a threshold that the city manager needs to get over before he can expend the kind of funds that it takes to undertake that kind of investigation, which is not cheap. So the city manager needs to satisfy himself that there's more than just uh rumor uh involved.
Well, I'm, yeah, I am sorry that this happened. I, we have enough problems finding, I mean, we now have two empty seats again on the planning commission. Um, you know, we have enough trouble finding people to volunteer for these things that I really regret that this had to happen. And I do apologize to Grant on a personal basis, as much as on behalf of the city, so I'm done, that's it.
Okay, anybody else? Anything else to add tonight? Meeting is adjourned, thank you all.